To the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for ... for a moment of reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world, and also for all those who have passed away in our community during the past week. Thank you.
Mr. Wexler?
Here.
Mr. Rogan?
Here.
Mr. Lascom?
Here.
Mr. McGough?
Here.
Dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Third order, 3/8 minutes of the Scranton-Lacawana Health and Welfare Authority's regular board meeting of April 24, 2014.
Are there any comments, if not received and filed?
3B minutes of the composite pension board meeting held April 23, 2014.
Are there any comments, if not received and filed?
3C audit status from Robert Rossi and Company received May 22, 2014.
Are there any comments, if not received and filed?
3D tax assessors report for the hearing date held May 7, 2014.
Are there any comments, if not received and filed? Are there any clerk's notes?
Nothing, Mr. McGough.
Thank you. Do any council members have announcements?
Yes, Mr. McGough. I'd like to announce that the serving seniors will hold their annual picnic at Walworth Park on Sunday, June 1, from 3 to 7. Tickets are $25 for adults and $12 for children, and will be available at the door.
Anyone else?
Thank you. Just wanted to announce that the Neighbor Works will be holding a project. It's being planned for West Scranton in partnership with Group Cares Incorporated and the West Scranton Hyde Park Neighborhood Watch for the week of July 28 through August 1. They are going to be doing porch repairs, construction, step repairs, exterior painting, interior painting, weatherization, wheelchair ramp repair and construction. Both labor and materials are free to qualifying households. You can get the application and apply for this program by going online to www.nwnep.org, or you can call 570-558-2490. Also, the Paint the Town project will be happening in the Hill section. Paint the Town is a project being planned, again, by Neighbor Works, Northeastern Pennsylvania, and Habitat for Humanity of Lacawana County for the week of August 16 through August 22. This project will bring together volunteers from our area to do service work for those who could use a helping hand, with all work done at no cost to the homeowner. Applicants will be selected based on the need and availability of assistance. Income guidelines are on the back of the application. If you have any additional questions, please call Carissa at 570-558-2490. You can also find the application on the same website as the previous one I mentioned, www.nwnep.org. And that is all I have. Thank you.
On tonight's agenda, there are two pieces of legislation in fifth order, which were the subject of tonight's public hearing. Those are dealing with the changes to the CDBG funding. Both of those will be in fifth order for introduction this evening. In sixth and seventh order, there is legislation dealing with the surveillance network system at Scranton Police Headquarters. There were some questions that were asked last week concerning this. Those questions, I believe, will be addressed by Mr. Lascom and Mr. McGough during motions, or when the legislation is read. And that is all.
Fourth order, citizens' participation.
Mr. Quinn?
How's it, Quinn?
Good evening.
Hill Neighbor Association President. First of all, I want to thank Councilman Wexler and Councilman McGough for attending our meeting last night of the Hill Neighborhood Association to listen to the people's concerns. It's great to have elected officials at our meetings because we're able to talk firsthand, face-to-face with them. It's great. Thank you very much, gentlemen. And secondly, on our agenda, we also had, as Mr. McGough had previously said in motion, that Neighbor Works will be in the Hill section, and you can also get an application at the Hill Neighborhood Association office, 419 Prescott Avenue. We also discussed the cell towers, and we had M.D. at the meeting last night, and she expressed that there's information coming out, new information, that is negative in regards to cell towers. And if you like, I'd put you in touch with her, okay? And those two, what's his name, those two CDBG programs, if you look at that HUD audit, you're not going to approve that. You're not going to approve it. It was just chaos being done by that OECD department since 2008, '09, '10. That's what that audit's from for four years, and it's just complete chaos. And if you approve that without looking at that audit, then, I don't know. It's like spitting in Inspector General's face, you know? I also want to say that, in regards to, I would appreciate having the surveillance for the police on there. You know, the Hill Neighborhood Association has three bikes. Its basement, which we bought, and we used to have the neighborhood patrols, which was a great thing. There was no doubt about it, just like a beat cop. You never knew when that guy was going to show up, that police officer, you know? I'm zipping down on that bike. And the more you realize it, the more we got to find ways to get them back into the neighborhoods. There hasn't been any approach, as I say, in the last 12 years, and I hope that you gentlemen will sit down with the administration and try to find ways. You know, when you say that a policeman can, paid with OECD funds, that's CDBG, can only go to Olive Street and then can turn around because he's being paid with OECD funds, is ridiculous. And there's got to be some way that if you discuss this with HUD, there's a possibility, you know what I mean, that there's a way that he could do this. But I don't see it being done right now by just saying, "Black is black and white is white." It's not going to be done. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Quinn? Bill Jack? Please.
Good evening, Scranton City Council. Stacy Catherine? Did I get it right? Laurie of Amel? Haven't seen you guys in a while. I'm just going to start off by saying the question that I asked like 13 years ago. Where's the money? Where did all the money go? I think that's, whenever we get the answer to that question, maybe we can solve some of the problems that the city now sees. The problem, you know, I was at the caucus, I was here for half the caucus, but you know, the problem is there was never any documentation of anything. Nothing was ever documented, I mean, at OECD or at the single tax office. If you remember during this period of time, I believe Mr. McGowan, I think, what is his name, was the tax collector, and he lost $11 million. And we couldn't even get a forensic audit done by the FBI or by anyone because it was that messed up. And they, this FBI even came out and said we cannot prosecute incompetency. So these problems go back 10 years ago, 15 years ago, and they were allowed to fester for all those years. I can remember all those three-to-two votes. We had three-to-two votes for four years, and every one of those votes was basically, in my opinion, a wrong vote because it was against the taxpayers. Now, all those votes are coming, they're coming to get us now. The police and fire arbitration award, the Supreme Court award, what's been done on that? Probably nothing yet. And every day, the interest builds on it. So there's serious problems here. Do I have any answers and solutions? No. But I'm not an elected official, and I didn't run for office either. So I just know that we need to do something because we continue to go in reverse. One of these days, somebody's going to find a D on the shifter level, and we're actually going to go forward and get it out of the R, the reverse mode, because everything just seems, nothing seems to get better, the garages. The garages had $10 million worth of damage or repairs that needed to be done five years ago. They probably need $15 million worth of repairs now. Why? Because nothing has ever been done. Now they're recommending that we sell the garages. I don't know if that's a good idea. I don't know if that's a bad idea. But one thing I do know, the garages will never be repaired. They will not be repaired because the city does not have the money. You know, borrowing more money? Borrowing more money's not the solution. That's not even a Band-Aid anymore. We tried that for years and years and years, and where did it get us? Raising taxes again? That's not a solution because people can't afford to pay the taxes now, most of the people. Furthermore, the majority of the people that live in the city of Scranton are not taxpayers because they're not property owners. And then you've got that 12 percent that never pay anyway. So you've got to keep that all into consideration. The audit, where's the audit? The audit's supposed to be done 31 May. Where is it? Is it done? Is it completed? Will it be completed by 31 May? I bet the answer is no. So that's another problem that's been festering for year after year after year after year. And then we want to know why nobody has any answers or nobody has any solutions. Has progress been made? Yes, some progress has been made. The new administration is a much better administration than the past administration. The people in charge of these, the department heads, are much better people. They're willing to sit down and talk with you and help with you. But do they have the solutions to the problems? No. Why? Because we need money. That's the bottom line. I've said this many times from this podium. There's two five-letter words that go hand in hand, money and power. If you have money, you have power. If you have power, you have money. And there's no truer statement than that. And that's exactly what happens, not only in Scranton City Government, it's happening in state government and in the federal government. I mean, look at what's going on at the federal government level. It's terrible. It's horrible. And who's getting hammered all the time? The middle. The little guy, the working guy. The guy who goes packs a lunch every day and takes his ham and cheese sandwich to work. He's getting twilled. You know, does anybody care? They say they care, but do they do anything about it? No. Just watch Jay Carney's news conference every day and tell me what's going on at the Washington level. Absolutely nothing. There's no answers, there's no solutions, and no one is willing to accept the blame. Until people stand up and start accepting the blame for the decisions that they made and the votes that they made and caused the problems that the citizens now face, nothing's ever going to change because someone is responsible for it.
Thank you.
Joan Hoda, want it, city resident. I know in the caucus you discussed Mr. Amoroso and whether or not he'd be making return engagement to your chambers, and that he does, in fact, not work for council, but I think it'd be very good if he does reappear, especially with the publicity he got recently about his recommendation, so to speak, about selling five garages and a pension income tax. Even if the city opts never to follow his recommendations, I still would like to hear what he has to say, since he came in here and tried to give us a picture of the city. And we also need to know from the mayor, because he's been in office almost five months now, what he is going to do about the budget. He opted not to open the budget when he became mayor and modify it. So I think we're getting close to the point where he should be ready to tell the city what he plans to do. So if you hear anything about Mr. Amoroso coming forward, make sure it's on page one this time. I looked at the backup paperwork earlier today, and I saw Mr. Rossi firm gave us another status of the audit report as of May 22. Today's May 29. The audit should have been out by Saturday, but there are still 26 outstanding items. I think it's the same 26 outstanding items that was on his prior status report, so I don't think much progress has been made there. I looked on the website, and I noticed that the last audit didn't come out until mid-November of last year. If that holds true for this year, it's not going to help you much in preparing next year's budget. Mr. Lascom, I think you're going to be talking about that surveillance system?
Yes.
You're going to be addressing what they're planning in terms of protecting citizen privacy and what's going to happen with that data?
Yes.
How they're going to store it? Who's going to have access? Good, I would like to hear that. And I'm not going to go back about OECD in the line of credit. I've had my say on that. I just hope that we don't have any more root surprises this week. I've had my quota. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hoda. Anyone else who wishes to address council?
Good evening, Council. Dave Dobson, resident. Taxes paid, garbage fee paid. Last week, we missed a great opportunity once again, tax-exempt compensation. And I feel that if they don't want to compensate you people through the pilots, that they should at least be willing to go to our state representatives and the governor and see if we could get some kind of compensation from the state, in as much as 33 percent of our properties are tax-exempt, and we receive nothing for them, and they benefit the entire region, if not the country. Now, delinquent fees, once again, I paid my trash bill last week, and it took a sizable chunk of my income tax return. There isn't much left after that. And it would be nice to start collecting, and this year is the year that, personally as a voter, I expect to see a line drawn in the sand. No more people with six homes in a city scoffing at the trash fee. If I have to pay extra, they should at least pay their fair share. And on the OECD, now that we know how done it, what about who done it? And why, how this happened, that $1 million or whatever was somehow deposited in the wrong account, and somebody says, "Yeah, we got it. Let's go." It's like being overpaid at an ATM machine or something. You're supposed to turn that money back. If I put in $50 and I get $500 out, I'm liable for it. And once again, I hear about sale of the sewer treatment plant. I fail, absolutely fail, to comprehend how adding a large margin of profit to some hedge fund manager that would buy up the sewer treatment plant, how that will benefit us as far as reducing our taxes. It absolutely won't because we'll be paying three times over down the line. And by the way, they'll be sending lobbyists to our senators and congressmen, and lobbyists to our, the EPA, and getting extensions and not doing the proper updates. That's what the problem was the last time. We got fined $2 million, it was reduced to $1. And on these loans that were given out years ago, I'd like to hear about how much of those we're liable for, and I understand about two-thirds of them have never really been paid. And again, this week, our hospitals are losing money. Somebody has to do something. If they don't like Obamacare, then come up with a better idea, but I don't think they have a better idea. They've got 151 amendments on Obamacare, so... But that is why the hospitals lose money when some poor jerk gets run over down the street, and you're going to the hospital with a heart attack, and he's getting sewn up first. Well, you know, you might sit there and die, even though you have good insurance. And, okay, once again, call your congressman and the president and tell them, "No more trade packs." Does anybody, can anybody figure out that when somebody goes from $15 an hour to $8 or $9 an hour, that that's less city taxes and less school taxes and so forth they're paying, that are being paid in? I mean, it's just unfathomable how gullible people can be. You know, you could have all the import goods on a shelf you want, but if people aren't buying it, they're not worth anything. And once again, I'll talk about a small national issue. Congressman Burr, North or South Carolina, walked out on the vet advocacy groups and returned only to chide them and treat them like beggars. And of course, we have a national scandal with our veterans' care. And, you know, he walked out as soon as they started to talk, and he walked back in right as they were finishing, and treated them like, like I said, like beggars of snake oil. So Congressman Burr, you get the golden parrot. Bach, bach, don't forget the bach, bach, bach. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Marie Schumacher.
Good evening.
I'd like to start with the proposed, or possibly to be proposed, cellphone tower at Naug Park specifically, because I pulled out my copy of the deed, and it does state that "The only proper use and behalf of the said party of the second part, which is the city of Scranton, its successors and assigns forever as and for a free public, open park forever, and for no other use intent or purpose whatsoever." So I would think a cell tower would fall into that category and not be proper on that piece of land. Next, 5B and 6C, I do have to say something. I think the wrong entity is embarrassed by this. I don't think it should have been Mr. Voskov who was embarrassed. It should be the city of Scranton. We knew how much came in, we know how much goes out. Obviously, there was a big chunk of unaccounted for money, and we have no idea where it went. And it's very sad. It's a black eye, again, going back to the single tax office, just as bad. I guess it'll never end. On election evening, there was a meeting held primarily for the municipalities, but also for the public, on the Keystone landfill expansion. Sadly, nobody from Scranton attended that, not our engineer, not anybody. And if it was our engineer, I wonder how it would be treated because the landfill expansion has the same, as CECO, the same as we have, and how that would, might possibly be a conflict of interest. But I would hope you would urge the administration to get them involved. Maybe you're not aware, because of your location, and I don't even know, maybe, I know Act 101 opens things up again. I don't know if it's just for the host communities or if it's those affected. But those of us who live on the East Mountain are definitely affected. We're affected now when that peak is where it is now. I've already been forced into my home from doing yard work because of the horrible stench from that landfill. And the only thing that DEP was, would guarantee is that, hey, it's a landfill, it's garbage, and it's going to stink, and it's going to get worse. And it's going to go up, what, 165 feet higher? It's going to be a peak, and when the wind's against us, it's going to definitely affect our quality of life and, I think, also our property values. And I would hope, on behalf of those on the East Mountain, the city of Scranton would get involved. Next, the treasure sale. I did go over the amounts owed, and it seems to me, I don't know, maybe somebody can explain to me how this works. When, does a treasure sale actually take a property away for, say, a lot that were under $1,000? I would think if that actually takes that person's home away from them, where they have built up equity over years, that there should be some threshold. And you can tell me if that doesn't happen, but I think it does. And I think there should be some threshold where a lien is filed against it so that when, such that when the home is sold, that's when the city gets paid for their back taxes. Taking someone's lifelong equity for $635.27 does not seem right, nor does it seem proper that this city would have some more ownership in our land values and our property values if they were dependent for their taxes on the market price of that home. They continue to sink. It's very, very bad. And I would like, do, does a property get taken away from an individual due to a treasure sale?
I do not know.
Perhaps you could find out and let us know next week? Thank you.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
You know, I'd just like to say here tonight that, you know, reading the article in the Scranton Times about sale of city assets, once again, like the garages, I think we need to ask ourselves how much those garages cost to build, and then what we're willing to try to sacrifice them for. I think that sale of those garages, I'm hoping that Mr. Wassau and the bondholders refuse to sell or fight the sale. I hope that if it comes to council, the council will not consider it. The same with the sewer authority. We had the American Anglian deal, did nothing for the residents except, you know, just really caused a lot of havoc with the equipment at the sewer authority, and everybody made money. And I don't think that should be an option either. I think really what needs to happen here in the city is really quite simple. I think we need to turn the pensions, the city's pension fund, over to the Commonwealth. There's just absolutely no way the city can finance it. It's time, really, for the council and the mayor to come forward and tell the residents exactly where we sit and what our options are. And in my opinion, they're not very pleasant, but to be honest with you, we just don't have the money in this community to pay those debts. Selling the assets like the sewer authority off might be a one-time revenue enhancement, but we've done that all along for decades. There's just nothing left. I mean, that was, that sewer authority really also belongs to Dunmore, and I just can't understand how Mr. Amoroso, the mayor or this council or anybody else in elected office, can continue to follow a course of action which continues to deplete the city of all its assets. I believe we're going to lose firemen again very soon because I haven't heard anything about a new grant. And I just have to say to this council that it's not, it's not a black mark on the government to finally admit that we're beyond our means and over our head. And when people come to the podium here and talk about the Commonwealth stepping in and helping us, the Commonwealth is talking about selling billions of dollars of pension bonds because they're in trouble. We're all in trouble. We've lived... We've lived beyond our means for decades and pretended that we could just borrow continually forever and everything would be okay. And that's why we have double-digit unemployment, but we've recalculated the way we calculate somebody as being unemployed, so we drive our numbers down. And more of the baby boomers in my generation are leaving the job market through retirement than young adults entering, and we still can't give them employment. America's a very sick country with very serious problems, and in my opinion, they're politically based. And if we're going to right this ship, then I think it's time for the elected officials, and I have a great amount of respect for all five of you, including the mayor, and I don't want anybody to have the opinion that I have an adversarial position against you. I just think that it's important at this time to tell the residents, not only here, but across the state government and the federal government, to be honest for once with the people in this country and tell them, we've kicked this can down the road as far as we can, there's no money, there's not gonna be any money, there aren't any jobs in this country. And you listen to people talk about, I don't know, giving businesses tax breaks, and then you take a look at what it costs banks to borrow money, nothing. So it just proves a point that we're in real big trouble here. And I think that selling the parking garages isn't gonna take us anywhere, because if you pull a number out of your hat, you say it costs twenty dollars to build them and we're gonna sell them for two dollars, then the residents of the city lost eighteen dollars. And when you talk about the sewer authority, we took a bath the last time with American Anglian, but if we're gonna turn around and sell an asset like that and say, that costs twenty dollars and we're gonna sell it for two dollars, and then we're gonna turn around and unleash that company on the residents of this city who are gonna double or triple rates to get a return on their investment, doesn't make any sense either. And I think it's time to tell the firemen and police or municipal unions that we can't pay that settlement, because if we had the ability to borrow that money, it would have been done by now. And if the city's employees wanna take City Hall, I'd tell them, let them have it. And if they wanna run the sewer authority, let them run it. But the truth of the matter is, we're out of money, we're out of options, we can move whatever you wanna call it, the little ball under the shells around a little bit more, but the truth of the matter is this, when you look at this city, there's an awful lot of empty properties here. Tax sales of properties isn't gonna get us anywhere, but look, I appreciate your time.
Would you just state your name for the record?
Oh, Lee Morgan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Thank you.
Anyone else who wishes to address counsel?
Fifth order, five A motions.
Mr. Wexler?
Thank you, Mr. McGough. First, I would like to offer my condolences to the Darbenzio family, I'm sure it was a tragic loss for them. I also would like to thank the Scranton Police Department and the District Attorney's Office for the quick apprehension of the suspect in this case. It's my hope that the fact that there was a quick arrest here would send a message to other people who want to come to our town, that if they come here and commit a crime, that they will be prosecuted to the fullest extent of the law. I also would like to say that this is a great reason why our crime watches and our neighborhood associations really are the extra eyes for our police force in our city to help prevent future incidents like this. On Monday, I was fortunate enough to attend Memorial Day services at both the Cathedral Cemetery and at Naug Park. There was a great turnout of support for these men and women who have given their lives for our country, and it was extremely encouraging to see how many Boy Scouts were there, and the fact that there were many grandfathers and grandmothers there with their grandchildren who can get an understanding of how great our country is, and I was proud to be a part of those services. Thank you, Mr. McGough.
Mr. Rogan?
Thank you. Just a few comments on agenda items and some other items. I'll start off with the items in fifth order regarding the OECD funds. It's certainly not a position that any of us up here wanted to be put in because of a mistake that was made nearly twenty years ago. And it is unacceptable that that lingered for this long until it was finally discovered. Unfortunately, that million, it was, that million dollars needs to be paid back. And I think as a counsel, we should do everything we can next year, when working with the administration, to fund the programs that we can't fund because of this mistake that was made. Regarding the six hundred thousand dollars portion of it, which is the payment that wasn't made by Boskov, Steamtown Mall Partners, as I mentioned during the public hearing and judging by the comments that Mr. Boskov made in the paper, I hope that he is a man of his word and he does what he said in the paper and makes the city whole. We will see what happens after, you know, the next few months pan out, we'll see what happens to the foreclosure process and with the mall. And then there's gonna come a point in time where the city needs to be repaid, or we will have this six hundred thousand dollar deficit in our federal funding every year. And that money is used for a lot of programs throughout the city. It helps the Boys and Girls Club, it helps pave roads, demolish hazardous properties, helps support many local groups, Dress for Success, so many groups. So I hope that Mr. Boskov keeps that into consideration moving forward. And like I said before, if he does make hole on this, the city will be very appreciative. But if he doesn't, and I know from talking to many residents out there, people won't patronize his store if the city's on the hook for this kind of money. So we hope for the best on that situation. Next, and I meant to bring this up in our caucus, but I didn't get a chance to, I know there have been some zoning issues regarding a restaurant in Scranton, the Villa Maria. I'm not sure where that ended. I know there were talks at zoning where a variance was denied, then it came to the city, and I'm not really sure where that stands. So Mrs. Reed, could we please inquire on that to see where the zoning issues regarding the Villa Maria currently stand, so we could get that sorted out on behalf of the residents over there? Today, there was a fire over in the Hill Section, and a resident friend of mine who lives in that neighborhood called me, and he smelt smoke, started walking down to the fire, less than fifteen, twenty minutes, and the house fire was already out. And our guys just did an excellent job, and they deserve a job well done for that. And finally, and I apologize in advance if I say some things that may be a little harsh on this next topic, but the murder that occurred the other day and the media coverage that followed it, what took place was absolutely disgusting. That a hard-working man out there driving a cab, trying to support his family, working at three o'clock in the morning, would be brutally murdered by a thug from outside of the city. It's not a city resident, he's from New Jersey, who came to this city to sell drugs, to be in a gang, and to cause terror. That's not what Scranton's about. There are so many people that, following this coverage, had said, boy, Scranton's neighborhoods aren't what they used to be. That's not Scranton. It's some out-of-town thug that came here to harm our neighborhoods and harm our residents. And as Mr. Wexler mentioned, what an amazing job by our police department. They solved a murder in hours, hours, almost as quick as you see in an episode of Law and Order. Unfortunately, this was real life, and children don't have a father now because of a coward that came to our city to join a gang and sell drugs. This is why we need to support our police department, our neighborhood groups, our district attorney, and personally, I know this can't happen, I think the perpetrator should receive the death penalty. I know that can't happen because of his age. But this is one of the most disgusting things that has happened in our town in a long time. And I hope that those out there watching don't get the impression that that's how the people in Scranton are, because it's not. It's somebody from New Jersey that came to our town, it's not a Scrantonian. The majority of our neighborhoods are safe and are good places. If you compare us to Wilkes-Barre, we're doing much better. But we need to continue to support our police department in these efforts and break into these gangs and stop these instances from happening. And my condolences to Mr. Darbenzio and his family, I knew him casually, we've met a few times, always a very nice man, and this shouldn't happen. And I hope that our district attorney, and I'm confident that he will prosecute this thug to the fullest extent of the law. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes, thank you. Excuse me. I too would like to echo my colleagues who spoke before me regarding the shooting. My condolences to the Darbenzio family for their loss. And again, I met with Chief Graziano, and I did commend him for the work that he and his police officers have done in apprehending this suspect quickly and without further incident. And, you know, just in my conversation with him, this man was capable of carrying this on. If anyone saw him on the TV, they saw, you know, just how ruthless of a person he is. And as Mr. Rogan said, he's not one of ours. He's not from Scranton. He came here to cause trouble and to join his friends in the gang. And, you know, I hope he gets his due justice and the DA's office too, receive some kudos for this situation. And in speaking with the police, you know, they just didn't drop it after they arrested him. They've done some further investigation, I'm not gonna go into details, other than they did, they did stop some associates of this man and remove guns from them, three different associates. So they're being proactive, as they do every day, out there trying to make it safe for us, and I think we all appreciate what they do for us on a daily basis. And this is a fine example of, you know, everybody coming together and solving this quickly. But it doesn't take back the life of a working man, and for that, we feel. This is not something we're used to seeing around here. And I hope, you know, we don't see anything any further on that aspect. Usually, we read about it in the news and other areas, but we have to be vigilant with our neighborhood associations and our police that are doing a good job on this. A couple other things in my conversation with Chief Graziano, he did inform me that Monday, I believe it is, they're gonna be ordering three new police cars with monies that they've raised from fines. So they're bringing their fleet right up to date. Excuse me. And actually, Monday, the bids will be open for the junk vehicles that were put out on the internet for bid. I guess the bid date is, the deadline is Monday, and there's approximately seventeen vehicles, so that money will go towards purchase of another vehicle or so, whatever they raise from that. Mr. Jackowitz, I believe, mentioned the arbitration awards, is the administration or anybody doing anything on it? I happen to know that they've been working actively on it, with the unions, with the administration. Mr. Bolzoni specifically has had a lot of input, and I believe Mr. McGough has been involved in some meetings, and he has some further meetings coming up to get this issue out. There's some things that Mr. Bolzoni came up with, and if everything is acceptable, it's gonna work out in everybody's favor. But, you know, again, it's another thing, you can't give a lot of detail out till the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed, but it has been ongoing actively, it's just not something that's being reported on a daily basis. So I just wanted to let you know on that. And, excuse me, the last thing was, on seven eight tonight, we're gonna be passing legislation for counts and that for the surveillance cameras. And there were a few questions, and I know Mr. Gahn will have some more detail, I'm just gonna give the questions and he'll explain, I think, how they're monitored and stuff like that, too. But three of the questions that were asked are, will the images by the system be stored? And Chief Graziano's answer was, the police department will not store any images, we will only be secondary live feed of already existing various public cameras. In other words, they're just being fed from these businesses, and they're not storing anything, it's just a live feed. Live feed from existing cameras from other entities, such as the school district, housing authority, parking garages, and others, will be sent to us in addition to be viewed by the owner or possessor of the camera systems. Question two was, who can view the images? On our end, the police department end, the images will be viewed strictly by police officers. And the third question, if they are stored, what is the length of time that the images will be stored? Well, that doesn't apply since they won't be doing any storage of these images. And just another, in our conversation, they had an incident, I believe it was on Mulberry Street, Lower Mulberry Street, the other evening, and they had the opportunity to use this camera and zero it in on the, I guess, the perpetrator or whatever. So it also allowed them, the dispatcher, to give more information to the responding police department, what they had to deal with there. You know, this system, we have to realize, there's cameras everywhere anymore, everybody's taking pictures with our phones and you don't know where there's a camera. But I believe this system here is gonna be a great benefit to our safety, to the citizen's safety, and just to have the fact of having the cameras, and I mentioned it before, say, someone has a hole up on a certain area and there might be thirty cameras in that live feed from that area, it gives them the opportunity to make a quick response to the proper area of the getaway. In other words, they look at the cameras going this way, the car didn't go that way, they pick them up here, they can redirect those officers rather than have them all scrambling in the same area. And again, you know, there could be some crimes that are being committed that are actually visual right there, that they could dispatch right from the office. There's many uses and many benefits, I think the benefits far outweigh any problems with this system, and I think it'll be good for us all in the future. And I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wexler. Mr. Gahn?
Yes, thank you. I attended the Hill Section Neighborhood Meeting last night to update the residents on the parking issues in the nine-hundred block of Prescott Avenue. Counsel will be moving forward with a parking forum within the next few weeks, as I mentioned at the previous meeting, and we discussed this in our caucus before tonight's meeting. Hopefully, this will alleviate some of the issues in that neighborhood. I received a complaint from a resident about a problem with couches and garbage on a porch located on Swetland Street in West Scranton. I forwarded that information along to the Licensing and Inspections Department. I have received concerns from a few residents regarding trucks picking up scrap metal and driving with it unfastened in the back of the truck, which is very dangerous. I reached out to Police Chief Carl Graziano, who explained that this particular issue isn't covered under a city ordinance, but it is covered under the Pennsylvania Vehicle Code. The highway unit officers are being vigilant regarding these violations due to the rising prices paid for scrap metal. And finally, next week, from June 2nd to June 6th, the Street Sweeper is scheduled to be in the east Scranton area from Arthur Avenue to Taylor Avenue, including all streets and avenues. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Did you have anything on that surveillance?
Thank you.
Okay.
It was mentioned, one of the things that was mentioned earlier was the talk of beat cops. That has also come up as an issue for downtown, that there at one time was a beat cop in the downtown area, no longer exists. And now that there are more people living in the downtown area, it seems as though there is even a greater need for police presence in the evenings especially, in the downtown. I believe that beat cops in all areas of the city are, would be a great idea. I realize that there are problems with the funding of that and all, but hopefully, we can move toward some type of system where those police, where there is a greater police presence in all areas of the city. As far as the budget process is concerned, I know that, you know, expectations of a budget being done by the end of May are, you know, obviously not going to take place. For a variety of reasons, the budget has, over the past few years, traditionally been late, last year, very late. Last year, very late. I know the Business Administration Office is trying to expedite the process as best they can. I would think that an end-of-summer expectation would be prudent. It's not going to be done, I don't think it'll be done before that, but hopefully, we can look forward to something maybe by the end of the summer to be for completion of the budget. As far as the cell towers, they were mentioned also. Keep in mind that there, this is, the idea of cell towers and using city property for them, this is a process that's basically in its infancy. There is no definite proposal. There have been some sites mentioned, but we're far from seeing any legislation on this issue. There's a lot that needs to be done before this would come before council for approval. Yes, it is something that people should maybe get some information about, if it doesn't in fact come to council, so that we are informed. But be it known that we're not voting on this in any, you know, very soon. I will also reiterate what my colleagues have said concerning the incidents at Valley I don't think that we should compare ourselves to Wokesboro, Reading, or any other city as far as a police presence. We're better than that. I think our police department treats the city with a no-tolerance policy. No tolerance for violent crime or any type of crime. And that is what we should be looking at. We don't want to be judged in relation to any other city. We simply want to do, and I think the Scranton Police Department does, its very best to keep this a safe city, and I commend them for that. And I think our Public Safety Department overall does a great job, and it should always be commended for the services that they perform. And that is all. Thank you.
Mr. McGough, just quick, I believe you were referring to the audit. You were saying the budget.
Oh, did I say what? I meant audit. I'm sorry.
For correction. I know what you meant, but just for correction.
Thank you.
And, yeah, in my conversation with Chief Graziano, we did discuss policing downtown and stuff like that, too, and he is working on that. That's not something that would happen this year, but he's definitely actively working on that. And, you know, more OECD officers for foot patrols for next year also. I meant to mention that, because Mr. Quinn had brought it up, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
5B, for introduction and ordinance authorizing the mayor and other appropriate officials of the City of Scranton to take all necessary actions to implement numerous accounting adjustments to the City of Scranton's IDIS system for community development block grant funds by decreasing funding for various programs to account for deficiencies in the City of Scranton's line of credit with the Department of Housing and Urban Development due to unplanned Section 108 payments by the City of Scranton in the amount of $1,662,043.98.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved. Second.
On the question.
Mr. McGough, I'd have a comment to make, please. I'd like to mention and commend the current staff of OECD for the work that they've done in bringing this issue to light. It's very difficult to come out and issue a report that says that the city somehow did not account for so much money, but they did that. And this, I believe, this is the first step in many steps that are going to be taken over the next year or so, where we get our house in financial order. And when you do that, the news isn't necessarily going to be good. It would have been great if they said they found $2 million instead of losing $1 million. But this is something that had to happen. The federal government has the authority to take money from our account without permission, which it did. In the morning, the money was there; in the afternoon, the money was gone. And that's something that we have to deal with. It's my opinion that in the future, these programs that we work with will be easier to manage if we concentrate programs that fit within the federal guidelines without stretching or making our programs fit that. We'd like them to fit right from the beginning. And I also think that as we move forward, we should select projects that are ready to go, and that can be completed on time. A lot of the programs that will have to come back for funding are organizations and groups that have this money sitting on the table for a while. So we'd like to see them, when the money is appropriated, we would like to see those groups to get started and complete the program on time and within the guidelines as established by the federal government. Thank you.
If I could just, Mr. Wexler, you said it perfectly. That's, you know, I couldn't say any different myself. That's exactly how it is. I just hope, again, going in the future, that there is more, you know, more attention paid to the accounts coming in, the accounts going out, or, you know, maybe modernize our system or whatever. I don't know what the answer is, so that in future, we don't run into this again. But what we have in front of us is a fact. It's something that has to be done. It has to be paid. And unfortunately, some of these organizations are going to be penalized by it, suffer this year on it. But I think, you know, as a whole, we're looking to make them whole in the future. And again, I understand, like Mr. Wexler said, they are looking for shovel-ready products or projects. I learned that by, you know, working on projects with the administration, Mrs. Abely and Mr. Priamo. They gave me a pretty good education on what has to be done and that. So I do commend them for coming in and explaining it. It is a tough decision, but it's something that, you know, our hands are tied, and we have to, we have to get this done, get our housekeeping in order. And I'll be voting for it. Thank you.
And again, some people spoke to the reasons why this occurred. Unfortunately, we, at this point in time, are not in a position to assess blame, nor will it do us any good to assess blame to any person, entity, or organization. We need to deal with the problem that exists, and these two pieces of legislation that we're looking at address the problem in the present, and we need to move forward. All those in favor of introductions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, and so moved.
5C, for introduction and ordinance amending file of the Council Number 56 of 2012, titled "Authorizing the Mayor and Other Appropriate Officials of the City of Scranton to Take All Necessary Actions to Implement the Consolidated Submission for Community Planning and Development Programs to Be Funded Under the Community Development Block Grant CDBG Program, Home Investment Partnership Home Program, and Emergency Solutions Grant ESG Program for the Period Beginning January 1, 2013 by Decreasing Funding for Various Programs to Account for Deficiencies in the City of Scranton's Line of Credit with the Department of Housing and Urban Development Due to Unplanned Payments in Various Section 108 Loans Guaranteed by the City of Scranton in the Amount of $1,662,043.98.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved. Second.
On the question. All those in favor of introductions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, and so moved.
Sixth Order, 6A, reading by title, file of the Council Number 23, 2014, and ordinance creating and establishing special city account number as noted, entitled "Community Surveillance Network System for the Receipt and Disbursement of Grant Funds Received for the Acquisition and Installation of the Community Surveillance Network System at Scranton Police Headquarters."
You've heard reading by title of Item 6A. What is your pleasure?
I move that Item 6A pass, reading by title.
Second.
On the question.
I just wanted to correct. During my motions, I mentioned 7A. It's actually 6A, just to correct it for the record.
You've heard reading by title, or, excuse me. On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, and so moved.
6B, reading by title, file of the Council Number 24, 2014, and ordinance authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to apply for and execute a grant application, and if successful, a grant agreement, and accept the funds related thereto through the BJA-FY14 Edward Byrne Justice Assistant Grant JAG Program, local solicitation in the amount of $23,898.
You've heard reading by title of Item 6B. What is your pleasure?
I move that Item 6B pass, reading by title.
Second.
On the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, and so moved.
6C, reading by title, file of the Council Number 25, 2014, and ordinance authorizing the mayor and other appropriate officials of the City of Scranton to enter into a lease agreement with the Scranton School District for use of city-owned property in connection with approved Westside High School soccer teams for a three-year period commencing April 15, 2014, and ending April 14, 2017.
You've heard reading by title of Item 6C. What is your pleasure?
I move that Item 6C pass, reading by title.
Second.
On the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, and so moved.
6D, reading by title, file of the Council Number 26, 2014, and ordinance authorizing the mayor and other appropriate officials of the City of Scranton to enter into a lease agreement with the city youth soccer for the use of city-owned property in connection with approved Scranton youth soccer for a three-year period commencing April 15, 2014, and ending April 14, 2017.
You've heard reading by title of Item 6D. What is your pleasure?
I move that Item 6D pass, reading by title.
Second.
On the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, and so moved.
6E, reading by title, file of the Council Number 27, 2014, and ordinance amending file of the Council Number 75, 2012, and ordinance as amended, entitled "An Ordinance to Provide Revenue for the City of Scranton by Imposing a Tax Upon the Privilege of Attending or Engaging in Non-Exempt Amusements, Including Every Form of Entertainment, Diversion, Sport, Recreation, and Pastime, Requiring All Persons, Partnerships, Associations, and Corporations Conducting Places of Amusements, Imposing Duties and Conferring Powers Upon the Treasurer of the City of Scranton, Prescribing the Method and Manner of Collecting the Tax imposed by this ordinance, and Imposing Penalties for the Violation thereof by Amending Section 4: Definitions Place of Amusement."
You've heard reading by title of Item 6E. What is your pleasure?
I move that Item 6E pass, reading by title.
Second.
On the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, and so moved.
Seventh Order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Public Safety for adoption, file of the Council Number 22, 2014, amending file of the Council Number 26, 2013, and ordinance entitled "Amending File of the Council Number 22, 2006, Entitled Authorizing and Approving the Designation of Parking Spaces for Certain City of Scranton Personnel in and Along Dix Court, the Parking Area in the Rear of City of Scranton Municipal Building, and a Parking Lot Along Mulberry Street Adjacent to Scranton Fire Headquarters, and Authorizing the City of Scranton Police Department to Enforce the Parking Designations as Reflected in the Attached Schematic by Adding an Additional Parking Space Behind Scranton Fire Headquarters and Redesigning Certain Parking Spaces to Reflect the Change in Which Some City of Scranton Personnel Currently Park as Reflected in the Attached Schematic."
What is the recommendation of the Chair for the Committee on Public Safety?
As Chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety, I recommend final passage of Item 7A.
Second. On the question. Roll call, please.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Loskam?
Yes.
Mr. Gahin?
Yes.
Mr. McGough?
Yes. I hereby declare Item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B, for consideration by the Committee on Finance for Adoption, Resolution Number 58, 2014, ratifying and approving the execution and submission of the grant application by the City of Scranton Police Department from the 2013-2014 JAG Single Solicitation Local Initiative Program for the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency Justice Assistance Grant in the Amount of $146,390 for the City of Scranton Police Department for Financial Support for the Acquisition and Installation of the Community Surveillance Network. A 32-monitor video wall located at Scranton Police Headquarters to create a system in which all surveillance of cooperating agencies will be shared in a live feed to the Scranton Police Department, and authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to accept the grant if successful, and disburse the grant funds for the City of Scranton Police Department acquisition and installation of the Community Surveillance Network System.
What is the recommendation of the Chairperson for the Committee on Finance?
As Chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of Item 7B.
Second. On the question.
Yes, just to mention a few points about this legislation. The police department is soliciting grant funds from the PA Commission on Crime and Delinquency Justice Assistant Grant Program in the amount of $146,000, $146,390. This will create a system in which all of the surveillance from security cameras will be used by cooperating agencies in a closed-circuit feed to 32 monitors located at Scranton Police Headquarters 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Currently, there are five agencies that are committed to this project. They are the Scranton Housing Authority, Lackawanna College, Elm Street Revitalization Project, the Scranton School District, and the University of Scranton. The Scranton Police Department will continue to recruit businesses and agencies to be involved in this project. The network will be fully operational within six months of funding, and none of the cameras that are being monitored actually belong to the City of Scranton. There are cameras that are already in place and are currently being monitored and/or recorded by the entities that already have them deployed. Essentially, the cameras have become a force multiplier in this instance, as police can then cover many intersections at once to potentially direct responding officers more effectively and efficiently to the scene and/or to the locations of any suspects. Any recorded video that is needed for evidentiary purposes must be obtained, as it is currently done now, from the entity possessing the cameras. And the police department is not guaranteeing 24/7 coverage, 24/7 coverage, to any of the participants. So I just wanted to mention that, just in case. I know Mrs. Hodawan has had some questions about that, and Mr. Loskam touched on it. And that is all I have on that. Thank you.
And I think, in addition, that the City of Scranton is not adding additional cameras. None of the, there will not be any cameras from the City of Scranton added to this system.
Oh, and one more point. Somebody had asked me a question about this, and I inquired for Chief Graziano. No additional salaries and/or overtime will be expended on this project. While the desk area is staffed 24/7 by an officer, this officer also has other duties to perform and would not be available at all times to watch the cameras. So just to clear that up, if anybody had a question about that. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Loskam?
Yes.
Mr. McGough?
Yes. I hereby declare Item 7B legally and lawfully adopted. Any further business? Entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Meeting is adjourned.